अल्लाह है फ्रेश अल्लाह, फ्रेश अल्लाह, फ्रेश अल्लाह एक देवने को मयन द मनिन्दुड़िया अलर्थले नामिंग गवासीकरण
We see a cry of a God fearing man
पोल्लापु के विलगिन मनिन्दुड़िया कुकुरले नामिंग गवासीकरण
We read about the outcry of a man which is issued evil
अवरगले सयामल सनमार्कमाई वाण्ड ओर मनिन्दुड़िया इरुदयत्तिन वेदनये नामिंग गवासीकरण
We read about the agony of a man, he did not do any mistake and I wonder when some mistake
अवं चोलुकरण नान येन करपथले रुंदे वेलिपटे नंदु केटकरण
He is asking why I came out of the womb
येन इन्हे इंद उलगतले परक्का वेतेर
Why did you allow me to born in this world?
ओरु कन्नु कानाद वडी नान सेतु पुरुंदाल नलमा यरुकुमै
He said, it would be better if no eyes seen me if I die
परिंग एवलो ओरु वेदनयीन उच्चत्तले अंद मनिन्दन पेसुकरण
You see, in what kind of great agony he is speaking
ओरु येलमयान मनिन्दन अल्लाह
He was not a poor man
इलाविताल ओरु नोरिंगी पोने, ओरु विदायतु पोने, ओरु पिनमारी पोने ओरु मनिन्दुड़िया वार्तयू अल्लाह
This is not the word of a man, one who was disappointed and frustrated and bruised
कत्तर काहे वाण्ड ओरु मनिन्दन नर्कत्तिन अधिकरिक्यो नर्कम अधिकरिक्युम बुढुदे अवन वेदनयो ओडु पोलम्बुकर ओरु वार्ताय
A man, he was lived for the law, when the distress more, he was lamenting this
येन येन इंद उलगतले परक्का वेतिंग
What did you made me to born in this world?
नान अप्पुल्दे अलिंदु पुरुंदाल नलमा यरुकुमै
It would be better if I destroyed before that
प्रिय मनवले, इंद वार्ताय अवुड़े वायले रुंदे वरुकर रुकु कार्नम न्न
Believe, why this words come from his mouth?
अप्पुड़ि अवुड़े वायल्विले नडंदा संभवुंगल दान येन
What are the incidents happening in his life so?
अवुड़े के पुल्लेगल मरीतु पुयुट्टारगल
Their his children were die
वेडुगल इडिंदु बिलिंदु पुयुट्टार
All his houses were also broken down
अवुड़े आस्तीगल एल्लाह अंकुल्ले याडपोट्टार
All his wealth were also spoiled
अवुड़े नन्नबरल एल्लाह वरोदिगलाई मारुकर
All his friends became enemies to him
अवुड़े सोंदा मनेवी नीलाह येन ऊयुरोडु रुकर, चतुपो अब्दिन चोलर लेवलु को वंदिता
He also came to the saying, his own, why are you living, why can't you die?
इप्पुडी पट्टा ओरु नेलवरत्तले वरुम बुढुदे अवन इंद वार्ताय उच्चरिताना
But did he say all this well when he come to this state?
इल्लाई
No?
इप्पुलु ते एपुडी अवनाल उच्चरिक्य मुडिन्दा
How can he say, how can he pronounce these words?
पदिनेलावसनत्तले ओरु वार्ता चोलर, पोराटत्तिन मेल पोराटम अधिकरिकर
The seventh word he says, there is indignation upon me
इदु दाह अवुड़े कुकुरलकु कार्न
This is the word for, this is the reason for his outcry
वायक्य एन्बु ओरु पोराटक कालम
The life is a battlefield
अंद पोराटत्ते रम्बस सिंपला एल्लार्मे इदुतु पोराडिटे रुकर
All are very simply, they are resisting and resisting against
एल्लामार्कत्तले एल्लामार्कत्तले उल्ला मनिशनुको वायक्य ओरु पोराटमागता आइम अमेंदु बुढकर
All people from all religion, the life is like a battlefield
एल्लामार्कमु आदु पोराडिटे दम पुयुकुंडे रुकर
All religious people are also striving and going
अना इंगे वायक्य पोराटत्तिन मेले पोराटम वंदु बुढकर
Yeah, life is indignation upon indignation
इन्हेकु पोयुरु नंदिकर, अना अधिकरिकर
Now we are thinking today it will go but it more in
नाले योरु इंद पोराटन इंड्रुन बाकर, अदु इन्न अधिकरिकर
But the conflict will over tomorrow we think, but it increases more
ओरु मनिन्दन न्न शिवान
What a man can do?
ओरु देवुंडे मनिन्दन अनान अना अवन मनिन्दन दान
Even a child of God, a man of God also is a man
अवुड़े कुले उल्लम रुकर, इरुदय मरुकर, शरीरत्तले बेलविनंगल रुकर
He is also having a soul and heart and weakness in the body
इप्पुडी बलदरपट्टा मनिन्दनाक रुकर, इप्पुडी पट्टा वेदनिगले अवन अनुभवीकर
Because he is a man, he is also curing all this pain
अदु अधिकरितु कुंडे रुंदाल अवुड़े न्न शिवान
If it is going on increasing, what he'll do?
ओरु लिमिट वरिक्य अवनाल निक्कमुडियम
Certain limit he can stand
ओरु लिमिट वरिक्य अवनाल समालिकमुडिय
There is certain limit he can also manage
ओरु लिमिट वरिक्य अवनाल ताकु बुडिक्य मुडिय
He can also tolerate for a limit
अदुकु परिक अवनाल निक्कमुडियले, अब्दिन रुकर नेलवरत्तु को रुमुदा न्न शिवान
What he can do, a brother he cannot tolerate it
प्रिय मनवले, इंद काले वेले उंगुड़े वायक्यले, निंगल पोराटत्तिन इंद पुगुदिले अमर्दु रुकर
Believe, in which conflict are you in this morning?
उंगुड़े वायक्यले पोराटम अधिकरिकर दा, इल्ला कुरैंदु बुढकर
In your life, whether the conflict is more or it is less
इंद्रिके ओरु देवुंडे पुल्लेगलुड़े अरिक्ये नान कन्नोक्य भारताल अधिकरिकर दे एन्द चोलुकर अनहम्बे
Many, most of them are saying, the children of God, the conflict is more, they are not saying it is less
ओरु कालत्तले निंगल पोराटा इरुंददु नंदु चोलर, ओरु सिलर
Some, very few people say, once upon a time I got some conflicts
मुदलावरु इंद पोराटम येन देवन अनुभवीकर रुकर, निंगल पुरिंजिकर
First of all, you have to understand why God is permitting all these conflicts
इदु पुरियाम, निंगल पोटु पोराडि प्रोजन इल्ल
Without a strive, without knowing that, if you strive, it is no use of it
पोराटत्तिन मत्तीले नाम निंदु बुढकर
We are also in the midst of the conflict
देवुंडे एदर्बार्पु येन, सात्थनुडे एदर्बार्पु येन
What is the demand of God or what the devil demands?
ओरु विश्वासी ओयुल्या कार्नंद रोस, रेस कोर्सले रुकर कुद्रम मद्री
Each believer in the servants of God are all the gods in the race course
आंड अवुड़े न्न चोलर
What the Lord says
यम्बिला जय छिरुवन चोलर
My child will overcome
सात्थन इंद पुगुले रुंदे चोलर
Certain is in the other side and say
अवुड़े जय केवे माटा
Your child will not overcome at all
इल्ला अवन जय छिरुवा
No, no, he will overcome
इवेंजुलवन, निचिमत्तोतु पेर
He will say certainly, he will get failed
इप्पुडी दाह ओरु पोराटक कालत्तले योबु सीकी कुंडा
Like this only the battlefield, job ends, that
योबु को वंदु दान पोराटंगल पावत्तिन उल्लंदु नंदिकर
Do you think the problems all came to Job because of the sin?
इदु एल्लाह विन्मात्तत्तले वंदु रिच्चि नंदिकर
Because of the vexing of him, it all came
योबु रंडा मदिकारत्तले आंड अवुड़े चोलर, मोहांदरम मिलामल इंद पोराटम वंद
Because without any reason, he got this conflict, Lord says
अब्दिन एन्न अर्थ
What is the meaning of that?
उंगुड़े विश्वासत्तिन परिचय
It is a test of your faith
उंगुड़े उत्तमत्तुकु इदु ओरु परिचय
This is a test for your uprightness
नी कत्तर काहे निक्रिया इल्लया एंगर अदुकु ओरु पोराटम
This is a conflict, whether you are standing for the Lord or not
इदु निंगल फर्स्ट पुरिंजिक
First of all, you have to understand this
उंड़ड़े वायक्यलुम, इन्नुड़े वायक्यलुम देवन अनुभवीकर पोराटंगल एल्लाह, नी निर्क्रया इल्लया एन्बु नी अरिय
You have to understand, in your life and my life, God is allowing all the conflicts, whether we are stand or not
परिचय एल्दन बुढकु दाह पुल्लेनुड़े तन्म उन्मयान तन्म पेट्टोरुकु तेरि
After writing the examination, only the parents will know the true state of the children
अदु वरिक्य यूनिफॉर्म कुडु रिटेर
Until then, they will be going on giving
अदु वरिक्य फीस कटिटेर
They will be going on paying the fees also
यूनिफॉर्म डेलिट ओचु पोटु पुल्ले ड्रम्मा पोनु ना आसपोड
Every day, they also wash the uniform and ask the child to go dream
परिचय कुफीस कट्रांग
They also give a pair of feet for the examination
यनकु पार्टम पुरियलन्टा वडने ट्यूशन नकर
If the child can't understand the lesson, they are making some future
परिचय नल्ला हलिरकन चोल
I have written the example, yes, I have written very well
रिसेल्ट वंद बुढकु राह, अवुड़े पासा पेला एवलो कोरंजिकान तेरि
After the result come, only whether he is fast or fail, ah, she has decreased by any
अदु वाले, पोराटंगल ओनकुले एपुडी तन्म इले नी पोराडिकुंड रुकर
In what level or what state are you struggling in the conflict?
देवनुकुम, पिशासुकुम रुकर पोराटत्तिन मत्तीले कत्तर नी निर्पाय एन्द विश्वासिकर
God is also believing that you will stand in between the conflict between God and the devil
अवं चोना, निंगल अडैच्चुन्दे वेली एल्लाह एडतुर
You take all the fence you put around him, he said
अब्दिन चोना
He said so
अवुड़े इदल्ला उमुड़े करत्तले रुक
All things are of him in your hand
अवुड़े कुले नल्ला वेली एडच्चु रिच्चिकिंग
You had a foot of fence around him
अवनै, अवुड़े वीट्टी, अवुड़े कुंडा, एल्लाह चुनिंग वेली एडच्चु रिच्चिकिंग
You have fenced around him and all things belong to him
वेली एडुतु परिंग, अवुड़े येसुए वेंडान चोल
You see, he will say, no Jesus
अवुड़े कुफेंसिंग एडुतु परिंग, अवुड़े येसुए इल्लन चोल
Take all the fence, he will say, no Jesus, he said
अब्दिन एन्न
Isn't it?
अब्दिन दाह अवुड़े चोली पाता
He said, the devil said so
आंड अवुड़े चोना, फेंसिंग इल्ल, वेड़ी एडच्चु बुढुंदा कुड़ा मर्जिलिकमाटा, एने मर्जिलिकमाटा
But the Lord said, not only the fence, if you even break the house, he will not deny me
इल्ला, अवुड़े शरीरत्त यादीले ओपु कुडुतु परिंग, अवुड़े मर्जिलिक्छुवा
The devil said, no, no, you have to give a body, in the disease he will deny you
अवुड़े आंड अवुड़े चोना, अवुड़े ऊयुरम अटु विट्र, शरीरत्त नी तोटु पर
The Lord said, leave all, leave his, only his life, not touch his
शरीर मुलुवो बांगरमान ओरु सुरी परुक्कल, वादै
He had the whole body, with a horrible soul
अना अवे चोना, अवर इन्हे कोन्ड्रो बोटालु, नान एबु रुपय, अवर मेल नम्बिक
But he said, though he kill me, I will go up upon him
ओरु पुदिय ओयुल्या कारण समीवत्तले यारंदु बुढ
Recently, a new servant of God died
नान रुकुंदा, अंद फेथमले निंगल हेल्प कुडुन्दा पाय
He was a boy, helped me in the faith
उलगत्तले वस्त वाण्ड
He lived vastly in the world
25 वैदु कुला अवुड़े पोक्रियामय मारिता
Within twenty years, he became very bad man
अवुड़े पेरंस कंट्रोल पन्नु बुढिया, कतैसु ओरु ओयुल्या कार्ते अवुड़े अरिमु, अरिमु पड्टिता
Without controlling him, the parents also introduced to his servant
अंद ओयुल्या कार्य अप्पुड़िया कोन्दु फेथमले विट्टा दाह अंद्रोड़ा अवुड़े कमारीच
That servant of God leaving him in the faith, from the day onwards, his life changed
नल्ला ओरु आविकुरियनार ना ओयुल्यतु को वंद
He also became a very good spiritual man, came to the ministry
चिटिरु ओटत्तम मुडिता
Suddenly, he also finished his days
ओरु नालनाल सिक्के ओडने यारंद
Before days, he was under sick and he died
अवुड़े अम्मा चोना, यनकु यम्बाय यंडे बाइबिल वेनु
His mother said, I need the Bible of my son
बाइबिल वाङ्गि पात
When we got the Bible and saw
अधिकमान पक्कत्तला अवुड़े एलिव पोटु एलिव रुंदा वार्ता एन्द दाह अवुड़े कुपिट्च वसन अवर इन्हे कोन्ड्रो बोटालु, अवर मेल नम्बिक
The most of the pages he has taken, though he slay me, I'll trust upon him
25 वैसले यारंदु सियोनु कुपिटांग
He also gone to Zion, the
नी 25 वैसले रुंदे यरुस्ले मुडिटे एन्दा योशिकर
We are also thinking, leaving the Jerusalem being in seventy-five years old
अवुड़े चोला, अवर इन्हे कोन्ड्रो बोटालु, अवर मेल दाह नम्बिक आर
He said, though he slay me, I'll trust upon him
पोराटम अधिकरिपु उन्मय, अना नी कत्तर काहे निक्कवेंडियु उन्मय
It is true, the conflict is more, but you have to stand for the Lord as a truth
इदु उंडे पावत्तनाल वंदु ननचिट्टी, नी उकान्दा अरिक्सिंजीटु रुके, प्रोजन इल्ल
There's no use of sitting and confessing, you are thinking, that is because of your sin
उन ताले रुकर, ओरु मुडियु मनसिया पट्टरकर यन्न पट्टरकर
All your ass when you hate a number
नान विश्वासी रुकुंदा, इदु वट्टा शॉट अविटिट
When I was a believer, I shortly cut
इदु वट्टा शॉट अकट्ट पन्नित
Shortly, before the shot I cut
विटु अवुड़े अम्मा चोल, पास्टर्स, ब्रदर्ला मरियादिया वच्चिक अवुड़े कुन्न बुतिल्ला मेडिल्ला विटित
When I go home, my mother used to say, what do you cut, ladies, even the pastors and the servants, everybody, they are having
इवं अप्रसंगत कटु कुन्जु वालत तैन्नु वच्चिक
After that, I grow it little more
मुड़ि आरीके आरंचिच
Has started
मुड़ि एल्ला उदल आरंचिच
Has started falling away
बरीबरी छोटामारी उल्ला आरंचिच
It is also like some blank upon my head
यनकु रम्बा भयम आयर
I also got off, right?
ओरनाल उकान्द जामन
And I pray
अब्दिन अकुर याव
I remember only
उंड़ल्ला मुड़ि एल्लाह, यन्न पट्टरकर
All your ass who hate a number
आंड अवुड़े नान चंज्य तप्पुनाल, इदु एल्ला निंगल कलिच्चिंग बुढुरुक
Lord, because of the mistake I have done, you have all taken all things
इदु एल्ला निंगल प्लस पन्नु
Lord, you make it all plus or add it
मरुबिड़ि अंद प्रदेश तेल नान वंद बुढकु, यनकु कत्तर अदुले नल्ला सुगत
When I came to the consecration, God gave me health
उन ताले रुकर, ओरु मुडिया निश्य पट्टरके यन्न पट्टर
Each and every hair of your head or number
अदु वेल्लया मारुन, वेल्लया मारिर नी डाय अडिच्चालु त्रिप्प वेल्लया दाह मार
If it become a gray hair, it will become a gray hair if you dye it, also it will become a gray
पेंडिकास्टले ना मई किल्ला वेली इल्ल
There is no use of any dyeing in pendi cast
कन्नुले मई पोटु रुदु ओडु दाह, ताले ले मई पोटु रुदु ओडु दाह
Applying the
कन्नुकु मई टीटरु ओडु दाह, ताले कु मई पोटु रुदु ओडु दाह
Painting the eyebrow is also equal to dying the hair
ओरु ओयुल्या कार्य बहलल्ला वेला संज्य रम्बा टाइट रंडु मून्नाल
Yes, seven of God going on working the whole day, he was very tired
अनहरा पोय मुडिवट्टर कणले बे उकान्द
Recently, we went to a barber shop
वयान केवन केट
He asked
हर डाय आन केट, इवर कु हर कटिंग आन केट आ, मान
Is it hard dye? He heard that wrongly, is it hard cutting? He said, yes
अवुड़े लाइट अकट्ट पन्ना, अवुड़े अदुल्ला तुंगिप
He was cutting slowly, starting slowly
चिटिरु चिल्ल रुंदे चिल्ल, यन्न ताले रुंदा चिल्ल नाव दान तेरि
Suddenly, he felt some chillness on the head
अवुड़े ओरु साइड डाय अडिच्चित
He was also applying the dye in the one side
अब्दिन तुम्मीनी जम्मा इप्पुडी केवल पुडित
Ten o'clock prayer, why are you shaming me like this?
नी वेतन दुंबो डाय अडिच्चु, अल विट्टान चोल
You leave me
तै, तै तैचार, अना अदु बुतिया काटिच
Whatever, you cut it everything, leave it
अल्लाई, इप्पुन डाय कु पदलाई, इप्पुन चाय अडिकर
People are also using some coloring the hair
अब्दिन एन्न
Isn't it?
अदु मार्रदुकु इप्पुडी ओरु स्टाइल, इप्पु पुदिशा उलगतले अरिमु पड्टिर
There's a new style also introduced in the world for the coloring
परिल्ला, नी एत्ना 13 वैसुकु नी ट्राई पन्नी पात्तालु, नी अदुले रुंदे मार्मुडिय
You cannot even change, we go on try, want to become the thirty years old
इदु के एल्ला न्याय तिरपु उंडे, एसआय मोना मदिकारम तोल्लु सिलिवाइच चोल
I say a third chapter says, there is judgment for all this
एसआय मोनराम मदिकारत्त बडिच्य बादिंग, नाम पुल्लेने एल्लाह बांगरमा ड्रेस इप्पुडी पट्टा ड्रेस एपुड़मुडिया अदु वाले तेरि
If you read I say third chapter, our children can't use all kind of dress what they are using
अवुड़े ले वे उकान्दी इंग्लिश बाइबिली, तमिल बाइबिली, आरसी बाइबिली, मूनी चैत एडुतु ओचु, पडिच्य पाति चोना, नाम पुल्लेने एल्ला करेक्ट आयर
If you read, or read at home, the Tamil Bible and English Bible and Nazi Bible together, all children will become
तुप्पटा वरिक्यांग, लाइन इप्पु उल्ला मॉर्न, 200 वैसले तुप्पटा, बाइबिल एडिच्चु रुक
In the Bible, it is written about the thupeta in the twenty-first century
इरुक
Isn't it?
एसआय मोना मदिकारत्त अवुड़े ले बडिच्य पार, इदुक्ला न्याय तिरपुरुक
Go home and read I say third chapter, what are the judgment you have for
नामकु वरुकर पोराटंगल परिषुत्तुरुके एन्बु दान पुरिंदु गलवें
We have to understand all the conflicts come to us for our goodness
नामकु वरुकर पोराटम विश्वासत्तुरुके एन्बु दान पुरिंदु गलवें
We have to understand all our conflicts are for our faith
नामकु वरुकर पोराटंगल, नाम कत्तर काहे निर्क्रमा इल्लया एन्बु दान नामे सोदित्त अरिय देव नामका अनुभवीकर
God is also permitting all the conflict, whether we are standing for the Lord or not, that we have to judge ourselves
नंद्राक निंगल पुरिंदु गलवेंडियु अवस्य
It is necessary, we have to understand well
नामे नामे पुरिंदु गलवरा, कत्तर रुंदा पादिले नामे कुंडु
God is taking us through this path, we have to understand ourselves
देवन अरियाम, अवुड़े कुन्मय सम्भविक
Nothing will happen so without the knowledge of God
पोराटत्तिन मेले पोराटम अधिकरितु कुंडे रुंद
The conflict is upon a gun, conflict
एत्ने वर लाइफले इप्पुडी पुयुट
How many are going in your life likewise?
इंद लाइफले पुयुट रुकुंदा, लास्टले योबु चोल्टा, अय्यूयो नाम परंदु दे तावरु बोल
While you are going in this path, only Job says it is wrong, I go
ओरु उत्तमन इप्पुडी पट्टा ओरु वार्ताय कोटुकर नंदु चोन अवन एवलो बरीय पोराटत्तले पोयुरु पांगर, नी दान इदु पर
We have to judge you, sir, how righteous man and upright man saying, how much a conflict he might have gone through
एल्लार्ड़ड़े वायक्यलु रुंदे पोराटा रुक
In all people's life, there are conflicts
पनकारन कटिंग, अदुके त पोराटा रुक
If you ask the rich man, he is having a conflict regarding
कुन्जा अलाका रुंदांग, अदुके त पोराटा रुक
If anybody is very beauty, they are having the conflict
कुन्जन तेरमा रुंदिच्छिन, अदुकुरि ओरु पोराटा रुक
If you are some efficient man, you are having conflict regarding
उंड़ड़े वायक्यकु देवुंचले पोराटंगले अनुभवीकर
God is also permitting some conflict for your life sake
निंगल इंद पोटिगले रुंदा परिंग, ओरु कुरिकपट्टा वैदु उल्ला, ओरु कुरिकपट्टा यादे तोकुन्नु ओरु पोटिय
The corners or the corners, some particular ways should be carried by some people who might have seen
इंद्रिके इंद वार्तत्तले निंगल पुयुकुंड
In what kind of conflict are you going through today?
ओरु सुल्ल, अदु योबु चोल
If the same Job says
इंद पोराटत्तकु ओरु नाल्कल कुरिकपट्ट
There are some days that are a point for this conflict
अंद कुरिकपट्टनाल, अवुड़े पोराडिता आगन
He has to struggle all these, all the particular days
योबु, एल्ला मदिकारम मुदलावसनत्तले परिंग
Job seven one
भूमीले पोराड़, मनिन्दुनकु ओरु कुरिकपट्ट कालम उंड अल्लाह
There's an appointed time for a man to strive on the air
ओरु कुरिकपट्ट कालम, अवुड़े पोराडिता आगन
If there are particular times, there are appointed, he has to struggle
अंद पोराटत्ता अवन जीकन
He has to overcome that struggle
पोराटम एन्बु रीदीले मनिन्दन निसंदिकर
The conflict also means the man in various manners
ओरु विश्वासीकु ओरु विदमान पोराटम, ओयुल्यरलकु इन्नो ओरु विदमान
The believer has some different kinds of conflicts, and the servants of God, they are having some different conflicts
इंद पोराटत्तले रुंदे यप्पो मार्धल कडेकुन्नु ओरु सुल्ल एदर्बार्कर
Some people are expecting, when will we get that change from this conflict?
योबु, 14, 14 यप, मार्धल नान ट्रांसफर नंचर कुड़
It is not transfer, you don't think?
अप्पुडी अल्ल
It is not so
यनकु मार्धल यप्पु रुदु वरुम एन्द्र, यनुड़े पोराटत्तिन नाटकले एल्लाह नान यंगी कुंड
All the days of my appointed time, will I wait till my change comes
नल्ला पुरिंजिकर, ओरु पोराटम मार्ना एन्न है? उन्नां ग्लास पास्पेंटिंग अंगे एल्ला आना अवुड़ना केस्ट
One conflict over means another conflict
सेकंड स्टैंडर्ड, सेकंड स्टैंडर्ड पोन, एन्न नरक
What will go happen if you go to second standard?
सिलेबस एन्न शिवान कुन्जं कोड
The syllables will be somewhat more
सर्ड वंदिंग, इन्न इन्न कुन्जं कोड
If you come to the first standard, the more will be the syllables
इप्पुडी, नी ओरु पोराटत्त जय कुंड अदुतु पोराटम, अवुड़े कुन्न एन्न एनिसी वलुमयागतान अवुड़े एदर्कुमेट अवर कोरंजिरु नंदिचर कुड़
When you overcome the one conflict, the other conflict will be somewhat more than that
इंद पोराटम, ओरु नाल अधिकरिकल अना नी अदु जय कुनुरु दान देवुंडे एदर्बार
It is an expectation of God, the conflict may more and more, but you have to overcome
यह, यारमे वायक्यले पोराटमे इल्लन चोलर, अवुड़े रुंदा कई वेद
Say anybody here, I don't have any conflict in my life, Raisya Khan
एल्लार्करक
All are having it
एन्ड ओरु त्रु, ओरु पादिलम पोराडिटे रुक
Because each and everybody is serving in some path
नी शुमा इरुंदालु, पिशासु वंदु पोराटत्तत राकु उठ
Whether you are quiet, the devil has to come to you and start some conflict
एन्नंगले कुंडोर
He will also bring in your thoughts
चिंदेगले कुंडोर
He will bring in your mind
पेचुले कुंडोर
He will also bring in your speech
बारवेले कुंडोर
He will bring in your side
एदादु ओरु विदत्तले ओरु पोराटत्ता नी पोराडिटे रुक
In either one or the other way, you have to go on the struggle
इंद्रिके नम्मील एत्ने वेर, इप्पुडी पट्टा पोराटंगले संदिवर
Today, how many of us are going such kind or meeting such kind of conflict
पोराटा अधिकरिकु ना ओडु नी बाइबिल उडिटु पोयर
You should not leave the Bible and go when the conflicts are
ओरु वल्ल पिशासु चोलीरुपा, निंगल पोराटत्त अधिकरिच्चु परिंग, अवुड़े कृष्टवत ओट्टे ओडिर
Sometimes the devil may say, you also increase the indignation, he will go from their Christianity
नी आंद्रुड़े नम्बिकी कु पात्रमा नरक पोर इल्ला पिशासी नम्बिकी कु रियोना, नी मारपोग
Are you going to be a man of worth for the law or the war worthy for the devil?
इंद नरत्तले नी जय छिटे एर
All the time, you have to go on, overcome
एल्लाह विडंगले ले वेटिसरक्का पन्नु कर, देवन एन्द चोली रुक
He said, go and make us conquer in all places
ओरु विश्वासी, ओरु ओयुल्या कारण, अवुड़े जय छिटे एर
A believer has seven of God, he has to go and get over
अवुड़े कु तोलविंगर, सरत्रमय रुक
You should not give any history of failure in his life
तालु मार्टम वंदालु, नी निक्कन
Oh, you are getting something, you have to stand for the law
बेल्ला अधिकरिच्चालु, उंडे आस्तीवारंग कत्तरकुले रुंदा नी निंदु बुढ
If the foundation is for the law, we will be going on standing in the
उंगुए रुकर, एल्लारु अवुड़े कोलप
All those are with you, they make confusion
योबु उंडे नन्नबरल अवुड़े पाइत्य कार्य
The friends of Job made him a some bad man
अनालुम अवुड़े उत्तमत्तले निंद
But he, even though he should find the
अवुड़े कतैसु वरिक्य कत्तर काहे पोराडि निंद
He asked, should for the Lord, till the end, signing for the Lord
अवुड़े मनेवी चोल, अवुड़े कोलप
Even your wife will say, she will confuse
अवुड़े सोंदा पुरिशने वेंडान ना कोलप
Even your husband will confuse you only
अवुड़े पुल्लेगले पोहवेंडान चोल
Even your child, she will say, no need to go
अवुड़े पेट्टोरुले वेंडान चोल
Your parents may say, no need to
एल्ला पोराटंगल वरत्तन चय
All problems and the conflict may come to you
नी इंदिको ओरु तीर्मान रुक कृष्टिवीन नन्बय विट्टे एन्न ओरु वल्लमय प्रिकमाटा दान नान एनिसी नी चित्र
You have to take a decision, no power can separate me from the love of God, you have to take that decision
यन्न ओनालु जरि, नान नीर
Whatever may come, wherever I go, I'll stand for the law
अन्न नीचे वल्ल एल्लाह कागल
You are having that assurance, Raisya Khan
यन्न वंदालु नी
Whatever may come
मत्तमा पोइटा कुड़, निंदु एर
Even the everything totally go, I'll stand for the law
इंदिके एत्ने वेर, इंद अनुभवत्ते निंगल वांचिक
Come here, we want this experience today
इंद पोराटत्तकु यप्पु रुदु मार्धल वरुनु, निंगल कातुक एर
You're going on waiting, when will you get the change for this conflict?
अदुकु ओरु कुरिकपट्ट कालम उंड एन्द बाइबिल चोल
The Bible says, there is an appointed time for that
अंद कुरिकपट्ट कालत्तले निंगल अंद पोराटत्ते जय तुड
Within that particular appointed time, we have to overcome that trouble
ओरु पिन चोलर, नान यन साकोद्रियोडु महापोराटमाय पोराडि जय
A woman says, I was to strive with my sister, with a great striving and overcame
आदियामु, 30 तम मदिकारा, 8 वसनत्तले पार
Genesis 38
यन साकोद्रियोडु महापोराटमाय पोराडि
With a great, horrible striving, I have strived with my sister
अवुड़े केद्री यार
Who was that? Who was an enemy?
परिंग, महापोराटमाय यन साकोद्रियोडु पोराडि
The great wrestling, I go wrestle with my sister
अवुड़े कु पोराटम पिशासा, इल्ला साकोद्रना, साकोद्र
Whether the striving is for you, devil or the sister or anybody
उंगुड़ परंद सिस्टर
Your own sister, it may be
उंगुड़ परंद साकोद्रन
It may be your own brother
उनु मुन्ना बिन्ना परंद
Either you may have the first or the last
उंड़ड़े कसिन रुक
It may be your cousin, brother or sister
उंड्र, उंड्र बिट्टा साकोद्र साकोद्र
It may be your cousin, brother
अंगा प्रॉब्लम यार
Who are having this problem?
यार
Who is having the problem?
ओरे विटले परंद रेंडु वेरकु ओरु प्रश्न अवुड़े चोलर, नान महापोराटमाय पोराडि जय
Yeah, but she said, there's those upon the same house, she's saying, I go wrestle with the great wrestling with my
अवुड़े कु रुकर, पोराटम, अवुड़े साकोद्र
Only she is having the wrestling with her sister
उन्न उनकु इप्पुडी पट्टा पादिकुड़ा सल्लनात्तला अनुभवीक
Sometime, this kind of path may be permitted to you
चंगिद्दले ओरु वसन
There's a word of God in source
यनकु रोधमा इल्लमिन वन अन्नियन आरंदालन पुर
I could have tolerated, man, God against me is an enemy
यार
Who was that?
यम प्लेटले यम कुड़ा उकान्द सापिट्ट अवरे, यनकु रोधमा कुरिहाले तुय
A man who was also eaten with me in my play, he was a piller of his scheme
अवुड़े कुरिया पोराटम, साकोद्रियोडु उल्ला पोर
He had a wrestling with their own sister
पावुलकु एन्न पोराटम
What kind of problem had Paul?
बेलिया फुल्ला पावुलकु पोराटन
Outside, totally
एरंडां कुरिंदेर, एल्ला मदिकारा, 5 वसनत्तले चोल उडुकुला बायां, पोरम्बे, पोराटंगल अधिकरित
The second one, he says, in where there is a conflict, out where there are so many
बेलिया फुल्ला पोरम्बे, पोराटंगल अधिकरितु कुंडे रुंद
Outside, there was so much conflict for him
वेटले अवुड़े कु निम्मय आर्कल, बेलिया पोना बांगर पोराटम
At home, you may be very busy, if you go out, there are a lot of problems for you
उंगुड़े पोराटा इंद तन्म उल्लंद कुन्जु निंगल योशिच्च
You have to think about it, what kind of problem is the conflict you are having
अना इंद पोराटत्ते एन्न पोराटम वंदालु, ओरु कालत्तले जय छिटे रुक
In once upon a time, whatever problem you got, you were going on, get over
आरंभत्तले रचिकपट्ट पुसले, इदु वट्टा बांगरमान अकोंद
In the beginning, when you were saying, there was so much rage in your life
अंद पोराटत्तकु एन्न बेर तेरि
What kind of a name for their conflict?
मिगुंद पोराटम
It was a great wrestling
एवरे रुकले नर्बत्तले पार
When we see in book of Hebrew
15 मदिकार
The 10th chapter
एवरे 15, 32 ले पार
Hebrew 1032
उबत्तरवंगलाकी, मिगुंद पोराटत्त चित्त
You also endured a great fight of affliction
कुड़मत्तले
In the family
सबैले
The church
ओलिर्गल मत्तीले
Among the servants of God
उंडे बिजनेसले
In your business
उंडे शरीरत्तले
In your body
एल्ला इदत्तले बांगरमान अपोराटंगल वंद कालंगले सिंधिच्च
You think about the days in all places, you got much a great affliction
अना अंदनाटकले इदल्ला सिंचितिंग, जय छिंग
But in that time, you also overcome and everything is over
Agreesen एन्न
What was the reason?
प्रकाशमाक्कपट्टनाटक
The days of illumination
परिषुत्तावीन वल्लमय अवुड़े अधिकरित्त, वल्लमयाय नी प्रकाशित कालंगलि इंद उबत्तरवमाकी अपोराटंगल, मिगुंद पोराटंगल, निंगल सुलभमाय सिंचित
He also overcame all the conflicts of the great affliction, when you are filled with the Holy Spirit and you were illuminated on the day
अना इंदिके पोराटम कुन्जा अधिकरिच्चुन्नु, नी नाय ऊयुरोड रुक
But today, if the conflict is some what for, why I leave you safe?
नाय एरुकुन, नान जतुपिटा नल्ला रुक
It would be better, why I have to live, it would be better if I die so
ताविद चोना, अय्यू, नान, महाने, अब्सलमे, अवुड़े कु पदला नान सेत नलमा यर
But David said, my son Absalom, if I died instead of, it would be better
नान यतु कुड़ा ओरु साकोरण्ट बेसिट
Yes, I was talking with a brother
ओरे सबैले रुंदे रेंडु वेर ओयुल्यतु कुन्न
They came from one
ओरु चर्चले रुंदे रेंडु वेर ओयुल्यतु कुन्न
They came to the ministry from one church
ओरु वन ओयुल्यत्तले इरुक ओरु वन ओयुल्यत्तले इल्ल, ओरु वन ओयुल्यत्तले रुंदे सेत
One was in the ministry and died, one is in the ministry
ओरु वन ओयुल्यत्तले इल्ल, ओरु तम ओयुल्यत्तले रुंदे सेत
One was died by being in the ministry, one is not in the ministry
अब्दिन नान चोना एन्न तेरि
What we said so?
इद बेलिया वनमय इरुकुंदा, सेत सेतु पोना एन्न इंच रुक इरुंद्र
One could die, he could be in the ministry, and another one when he could have died
ताविद चोल, अय्यू, अब्सलमे, नान सेत
David says, if I die instead of you, Absalom, it would be better, he says
पोराटा अधिकरिच्चन ओडु ने सेत
When the conflict is more, you should die
इद एरुकु पोराटा अधिकरिय
Why these conflicts are increasing?
एरुका
Why?
अवुड़े कु परलोकत्तले महिमय कूड
Because the glory in the government should be increased
हायल्ला तान अवर तनकु मुन वाइत रुंदा संदोषत्तिन पुरुट्ट अवमानत्ते एन्न अमल सिलुवय So he has to bow the cross, with the thinking, all the joy which was set before him अप्पुडी ओरु महिमय अवेंड इप्पुन निम्मरी कट्टा पोद
Does somebody say, I know it is such kind of glory, if I get rest, now there's another
इल्ला पाडुगल्ला कुन्जु कुन्जु इरुकु, नी सिंचिक परलोकत्तले अवुड़े कु मेनमयान एड़ा गड ना इंगी ए तड़ुमारी रुक अंगे एंग
You are having some suffering, you have to bear it, may you will get the glory in the government, here I am stumbling, how can I go to heaven, they say
वायक्यले प्रश्नेगल उंड
There are problems in the life
निंगल पोय उंगुड़कु चिन्न व्यारी वंद ओडु निंगल तड़ुमाराम, निंगल हास्पिटले पुय पात
When you get a small disease, don't stumble, go to the hospital and see
ट्रीटमेंट इल्ल, हास्पिटले पड्ट ना फॉर the treatment, but go and visit those people, those are in the hospital पास्टर हास्पिट्री पोच्चन, अन्न प्रसंगत तप्पा पुर
You don't understand the message wrongly, pass to the hospital
नी अंगे पोय पार अवुड़े पड़र वेदनया पात ओडु, नी ओडिया वंद नल्ला वेल इदु एल्ला सादार्न व्यादि वंद
You go and see, how much agony he is going through, this is an ordinary disease, it will come
प्रश्नेल अधिकरित्त अवुड़े कु वरुम इन्न प्रश्नले याराज छिक अना अवुड़े के गेट बार, अवुड़े चोलर गेट ओडु, नी ओडिया वंद
When the problem is small, you go and ask somebody, if they are having more problem, you can also come
अवुड़े कडिकर द टेन्ट्रल, इदु अवुड़े कु कस्टम अवुड़े पोयल्ला सिक्की, यूरोक्लिटोन्न चिक्की उड़
You are having the only the south wind, other breeze, another people are there, andangli in the Europe, clear on the air
योबु चोल, पोराटत्तिन मेल पोराटम अधिक
Job says, indignation upon indignation
अवुड़े के एन्न पोराटम वंद
What kind of indignation do you get?
पोरम्बे, पोराटंगल वंद
Outside, do you get going on getting the affliction?
अवुड़े के एपुडी पट्टा पोराटंगल वंद
What kind of affliction you are going on getting?
नी पोराड़ा वेंडियु एड़ मामसत्तुरु, रत्तत्तुरु अल्ल
You should not strive with the blood and flesh
नी अवुड़े पोराटा यात
With whom you have to strive
इशास्तमत्तु नी पोराडिटे रुक
Only you have to go on wrestle with the devil
अवुड़े कु रोधमा यारा एलिमिट नान अवुड़े पोट्टी सागडिक अवुड़े कुले रुकर, आविय सागडिय
If anybody rise against you, don't make him to kill, but the spirit which is in him, you have to make it
अवुड़े कुल्ला पोराडुरा, आविय कटिंद
You have to rebuke the spirit which is
योबु, अंद पेदरुकुले रुकर, आविय एस कटित
This is also rebuke the spirit which was found in the
अप्पाले पोसात्थन
You go behind me, certain
अना नमकु एपुडी तेरि
But how it was known to us?
पेदरु पोसात्थन चोल
Seeing Peter, the lost man, he go behind me
अवुड़े कुल्ल, मनिन्दुनके एच्च अवुड़े कुड़ियोर आविपोराडिन
He is also having the spirit, thinking about the things pertaining to man
इंद्रिके उंगुले एन्न आविपोराटा रुक
What kind of wrestling you are having in your spirit today?
नाम सिल्ल कारिंगले पोराडि मेलकुल वेंडियु अवस्य
It is necessary, we have to also rest something and overcome
पोराटा अधिकरिकु नंदु चोल पोलम्बिटे रुक
You should not go on loving, because the conflict is more
पोराटा अधिकरिकु बुढु दान निंग दैरीमा निक
When the indignation is increasing, you should be very bold
मुलंगल अलावु तन्नी रुक
There is water till the knee
अल्ल नीचल डिक
Can you swim?
अल्ल नीचल डिक
Anybody who has to swim there
मुलंगल अलावु तन्नी रुक इदल नीचल डिच्छन, नी कडंद
Have you to cross over, if there is water till the knee
नी सिंपल नरंदे पोय
Because simply walk and cross that
वेल्ला अधिकरिकु बुढु दान, नी नीचल डिक
When the floods comes more, you have to go and swim
पोराटा अधिकरिकु बुढु दान, नी इन्न खत्तर काहे वैराक्य मान
When the conflict is more, you have to stand for the law, boldly
अवुड़े कु वरुरा पोराटंगल, मिगुंद पोराटंगल आर्क
It may be the great affliction you may get
अवुड़े कु वरुरा पोराटम, महाबरीय पोराटम
It may be a great and great affliction you may get
अवुड़े कु वरुरा पोराटम, पिशासी इन्न पोराटम
The conflict may be because of the devil you get
इंद पोराटम आर्कलु, नी एदुत्त निक
Whatever the conflict may, you have to resist that
पावत्तुकु एदुत्त, रत्तम सिंधत्तक दाक निंगल इन्न पोराड़ाविल्लय, एन्द आंड अवुड़े केल
The Lord is also questioning, you have not strived again, setting the blood
पावत्तुकु एदुत्त, एत्ने वर पोराड
Come here, you are striving against the sin
नाम एन्न चेर पावत्तोड, पावत्तोड ओतु पोय
No, we are also go compromise with the sin
पावत्तोड इनैंदु
We are go agree with the sin
पावत्तोड वलैंदु
We are also go tending towards the sin
पावत्तुकु अजेस्ट पन्नी
We are also go adjust with the sin
मत्तमा एन्न ननच्छलु, नी पावत्तोड ओतु पो
Whatever other thing, you should not go agree with the sin
पावत्तुकु एत्तमारी अवुड़े वलैच्च
You should not tilt yourself according to the sin
एवरे एल्ल एन्न चोल
What is said in Hebrew?
पावत्तुकु रोधमा, रत्तम सिंधत्तक दाक, इन्न पोराड़ाविल्ल
You have not strived against the sin, although you shed blood
एवरे एर पनिरंड, नान्ग अलाहाक चोल
Hebrew 12:4 says beautifully Hebrews twelve four says beautifully.
பாவத்துக்கு எதிர்த்து நீ போராடணும்?
You have to also strive against the sin.
போராட்ட அதிகரிச்சுகிட்டே இருக்கோ.
The conflict may be go on increase.
போராட்ட அதிகரிச்சு சொல்லிட்டு நீ பாவத்தோடு ஒத்துபோயிருக்குடாது.
You should not go agree with the sin, because the conflict is more.
என் நண்பர்கள் லங்கு செந்து என்ன குடிக்கவிட்டாங்க. அப்பின் சொல்றது ஒரு கோலைத்தனா.
Is it a conflict, my friends all together made me to drink?
என் பிரண்ட்ஸ் லங்கு செந்து என்ன சரையங்குடிக்கவிட்டாங்க.
My all friends gathered together and made me to drink alcohol.
நீ தோத்துட்டு ஒன்னு இந்த அறிக்கே செருது தவறு.
It is wrong, after you also fail and give the confession.
ஆயிரம் வேறு செந்து உன் தலவெளியே சரையது ஒத்துநலா நீ என்ன செய்குடாது?
Thousands of people both are at the point you get, what you shouldn't do?
என்ன செய்குடாது நீ?
What you shouldn't do?
என்ன செய்குடாது? குடிக்குடாது.
You shouldn't drink that alcohol.
அவர் பாஸ்டர் பஸ்லே ஏர்நாரு.
Your pastor got in the bus.
அவம் அருசியாட்டு வீடியோ வச்சு மொத்தமா போடாரம்ஸ்டா.
They are also playing all the videos inside.
இவருக்கு போயியாகணும் போகாமலும் இருக்கும்படியா?
He couldn't stop going, but he has to go.
அதே நெத்தில் கண்ணு மொடிட்டு எத்தனும் நிறுக்காந்து இருக்குறா?
How long he can also sit closing his eyes?
ஆண்டவரே இதுக்கு ஏதாவது முடியும் டாக்கனா நல்லா இருக்குமே?
The Lord make me an end for this, he said.
அவளுதா?
That's all.
அவிடியெல்லாம் கரகரகரானு அடியு ஒரு மாறி கொலப்ஸாச்சி ஒன்னுமே வேலை செய்யாம.
All video, everything, we have collapsed and nothing worth.
நம்மால் என்ன செய்றா?
What all people do?
எங்க வீடியோ இருக்குன்னு பாத்து ஏர்றா?
Whatever the video is in the bus, he is going.
நீய பாவத்தை தேடி போய் சிக்கிகிட்டு பாவம் உன்னை விடவே விடாது.
If you go seeking the sin or ensnared, the sin will not leave you.
ஒருத்தான் வெள்ளம் போறதை பாத்துகிட்டே இருந்தானா?
Your man was seeing the blood was going.
நீங்கலாம் நகதக் கேட்டுருப்பீங்களே?
You might all hear the story.
கரடி ஒன்னு அதில் அடிச்சு உருண்டு வேற வழியிலாமு உருண்டு போயிட்டே இருந்து.
Your beard also was rolling in that flood and was going.
அவமாம் கடச்சு வெள்ளத்துல போறதை லாம் புடிச்சுபுடிச்சு வச்சிக்கிட்டா.
All people took all the things which was flooded in that.
இவம் பார்த்தான். கரைல வர்றவர்க்கு வைட்பண்ணுடான். நம்ம மொத்தம் உள்ளே போய் புடிச்சிரலானு உள்ளே போய் புடிச்சா.
He also thought no need to come wait for the bang, we let us go inside.
போயிட்டுருந்து போயிக்கிட்டுருந்து கரடி.
It was the beard was going inside.
அது ஜீவனுக்காக போராடி உருண்டு பரண்டு போயிட்டுருக்கு. இவம் போன உன்னை இவனை ஏற்றி புடிச்சுருக்கு.
It was stumbling for its life and rolling and going, when it was caught him.
இப்ப அவை இதை விட்டாலும் அது இவனை விடுற மாறியே இல்ல.
Now he wanted to leave that beard, but the beard.
நீ பாவத்தை தேடி போய் நீ உள்ளுந்துட்டு அதை பறகு உன்னை அது விடவே விடாது.
If you go seeking the sin or ensnared, it will not leave you at all.
அது உன்னை புடிச்சி உள்ளுத்துக்கொண்டு போய் உன்னை அடிமையாய் மாற்றி விட.
It will go drag you and make you a slave.
உனக்கு ஒரு போல்நஸ் வேணும்.
You need a boldness for you.
உனக்கு ஒரு சத்தியத்துல உருதி வேணும்.
You need a steadfastness in the truth.
நான் உளித்துக்கொண்ட பின்பே.
After I came to the ministry.
திடிருந்து ஒரு சூன்லெளில நான் பிடித்துக்கொண்டிருந்து.
Suddenly, in a situation, I got to go my home.
பட்டே திடினு பா பிரதர்ச்சுன்னா இப்படியோரு போன் வந்துச்சி. நீ எதுக்கும் போயிட்டு வாயாயா?
Such kind of phone I received, anyway you go and come.
எனக்கு ஒரு சந்தேகம்.
I got a dog.
She is here.
I remember that the milk is there, the brother is not able to do it.
Then only I understood that the order of milk should take that concentration is going over today.
That is what I did.
The ministry is so over there.
I have a room, I have put it down.
They locked me in a room.
Where did you go?
Because he is running away from me.
I saw a limit, I was very small, my uncle was a very rough type.
He was a rough type.
My brothers were very rough.
All my brothers were rough type.
They did not hear this. My sister also had a hair cut.
My sisters all removed jewels.
When they married, they went and cut their hair. Or they took their hair and cut it.
During the marriage day, they made her to own all the jewels.
That is like.
It is like.
I said, if you cut your hair, you will talk about it.
She removed all the jewels. I said, but she said no need to talk about it.
They went to a river, a Hindu came and cut their hair.
They took her and married her in a.
If we go to a market, we will talk about it. We are very difficult, we are very difficult. You go to a market, you will talk about it.
They took her off very well, so you have to shave your head forever and he said.
I was very small, I was twenty years old, I went to a market, I went to a market.
After a certain level, I started crying because my ministry is going to over.
I could not do anything there. If I go to a market, I will leave.
I got to break the house and come out if I want to run also.
You are a romantic. If I come here, you will not come.
I was crying, Lord, it is wrong. I have come here among the situation. It is wrong I came here.
I have a limit, I will leave.
After that limit, I will live there.
After that, I will leave.
I escaped from there after that.
My uncle said. Do you have boldness?
You do not have any boldness?
He said. You have a lot of courage, you do not have it.
After doing all this, he was saying.
You have to stand for your stand. You say whatever you do, you should not shave. You are sitting in a corner and crying like this. I remember that I have a root, I do not know.
Then only I understood like this on stage.
In a country, we will bury our priests in the river.
The devil will take us to somewhere and end snare us.
We need a step past. If anyone comes, I will kill him. His name is.
Though he slay me, I will trust him.
You have to stand for the law. Pastor, you are yelling at me.
You don't think even the pastor has tried so.
Pastor is not now. I have been there for twenty years, what happened, I say not now. Come.
It may come.
Come.
The conflicts may come.
Come.
They will take us somewhere and make us.
We will stand.
But we have to stand for the law.
We have to stand for the truth. Come.
The indignation where upon comes.
You have to strive according to the. For your sake, you have to give God the blessing.
God has given you the anarchy, you have to stand for the law.
How many others have come?
Because we are feeling the conflicts upon, conflicts today.
Jacob was going on striving with the law. He did not strive with anybody on this earth. He did not strive with anyone.
He was overcome and striving with man and the law.
He was going on striving with the law. Now in some villages, everyone has a husband.
In some houses, all are fighting with the husband.
He has a wife.
With the wife, they are fighting.
They have children. Parents.
They are fighting with the parents.
What is efficient? Do you have a hair cut? Do you have a beard?
You are wrestling with not with the flesh and blood.
What is flesh? He is a man.
The husband, wife chose the flesh.
What is blood? They have children.
The children and the brothers.
If my future is in my future, my mother is there, he says.
It is said that she is the bone of my bone and the flesh of my flesh.
If you have a child, you will not come to the pentecost.
So the husband and wife do not fight and come to the pentecost. There is no rule here in the pentecost.
Who is coming?
With whom we have to wrestle.
Do you have a beard?
With the.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a power? Do you have a beard? Do you have a power?
The rulers of the.
Do you have a power? Do you have a power?
We are having the rulers of the.
In this world, you have to come.
You have to go on strive with all the strange.
If someone comes, you will not come.
If anybody rises against you, or remove the spirit.
How many others have come?
Today we are struggling with the power of the enemy.
You have to strive for the faith. You have to strive for the gospel. You have to strive for the gospel. Do you have a beard?
You are having wrestling with the evil power.
Do you have a beard?
With the evil beast.
Do you have a beard?
We have to strive against the fallen spirit.
Do you have a beard?
You are also going on getting all the wrestle against so many spirits.
How many others have come?
Because we have a very bold to stand for the law.
I have to come to you. You have to fight the good fight of faith. You have to fight the good fight of faith. I have to come to you.
He says I was for the good fight for the faith.
You have to come.
There is a fight for, there is a wrestling for the.
You have to come.
So you have to strive.
You have to come.
What is that fight?
What is that? What is that? Come.
It is a good fight.
You have to come.
I fought a good fight of the faith.
Do you have a beard?
It is a good fight. That is we have to strive for the faith.
Do you have a beard?
First Corinthians.
Do you have a beard?
First there's Corinthians two, two, we have to strive for the truth.
Every day you have to strive for the gospel, to proclaim the gospel. Do you have a beard?
You have to strive with the.
You have to come.
You have to strive for the faith.
You have to come.
You have to strive for the gospel.
Do you have a beard?
You have to strive with the evil beast.
Do you have a beard?
Some problems you may not know, also come and meet you.
Do you know?
You do not know about them, you might pray for them because of them, so you may get some conflict.
And a prayer request.
I also got a prayer request.
I am praying in the church. Everyone is praying.
All are joined together and praying.
Do you have a beard?
You may also get the attack of the spirit.
There is a word, evidence of a word in Colossians two. In the heart of my soul, I do not see you.
I have a great affliction, though they have not seen my face.
Do you have a beard?
You have to go on pray and bow to all the spirit and go.
Do you have a beard?
What if the spirit comes in front of us?
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
If you go, you will also get a failure, but you are having the shield, the name of Jesus.
Do you have a beard?
You have to put on the name of the Lord always, son, you have to activate.
Do you have a beard?
You do not leave the Bible because the conflict is more.
Do you have a beard?
You do not leave the faith because of the conflict is more.
Do you have a beard?
You do not leave the fellowship of the Lord because of the conflict is more.
Do you have a beard?
When I was chasing the spirit in Purnagaram.
Do you have a beard?
We were sitting in the room and praying for a long time.
Do you have a beard?
If he is free, he will come.
Do you have a beard?
If I am so free, I start to pray.
Who will come? The spirit will come. I will be sitting in this. Do you have a beard?
It will be kneeling and talking.
Do you have a beard?
One point I learned from that.
Do you have a beard?
Don't say his name in the four o'clock and pray for him, whatever level I take him.
Do you have a beard?
Only one condition it will say.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
I also take the chop with the wind drag.
Do you have a beard? His name is Charavan. Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
Because we are getting about at four o'clock and saying praising for the Seramonan that everything is over.
Do you have all the books carefully? Yes.
Keep it well.
I have a beard.
Do you not be mouth eaten?
Do you have a beard?
Do not hurt by.
Do you have a beard?
You sit and praise for everybody, those are known everybody.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
The early morning enemy was destroyed.
Do you have a beard?
Early morning you have to praise the Lord and destroy the powers.
Do you have a beard?
Because we are striving in this early morning.
Do you have a beard?
It do not get afraid because.
Do you have a beard?
Do not work accordingly because the conflict is more.
Do you have a beard?
There is a promise, also strive with you, you shall not see them.
Do you have a beard?
There is a promise of God, God will also fight for you.
Do you have a beard?
As much as possible you can also strive.
Do you have a beard?
What a beautifully the Bible says.
Do you have a beard?
As much as possible you get a bad morning.
Do you have a beard?
As much as possible you stand for the faith.
Do you have a beard?
As far as possible you do the ministry.
Do you have a beard?
As much as possible you stand for the law.
Do you have a beard?
Senate.
What is the word? Colossians two. Sorry, I have a beard. Do you have a beard?
I also labor and striving according to his work, which worked in me my tini.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
I also labor striving according to his working.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
As much as possible do for the law, the later things will look.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
As much as possible you stand for the truth, God will do something for you.
Do you have a beard?
He will not lay the burden which cannot.
Do you have a beard?
He will not test you more than that which you.
Do you have a beard?
He is not the God which you bore upon you, all the burden which you cannot.
Do you have a beard?
43 like a warrior, a warrior he will also come down.
Do you have a beard?
I say a forty one twelve.
Do you have a beard?
You will not see those who strive with you.
Do you have a beard?
Let us all close our eyes.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
Do not panic about the conflict is more, but you have to stand for the law.
Do you have a beard?
You are going for learning the swimming.
Do you have a beard?
They will also teach you as much as water you can stand.
Do you have a beard?
If he takes you to twenty feet level, he will also go, he will also go.
Do you have a beard?
After that.
Do you have a beard?
Little by little he will take you in the deep.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
By hearing each mistake, God will also make it grow in that spiritual.
Do you have a beard?
There are times, appointed time for the conflicts also.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
The Lord is speaking, you child of God, for many years he has been striving, there is a change for you.
Do you have a beard?
Shall we all close our eyes?
Do you have a beard?
Do you have any conflicts in your family?
Do you have a beard?
Whether your family members become the conflict for you.
Do you have a beard?
Whether you are having striving in you or outside.
Do you have a beard?
Whether it is a great trouble or great, great.
Do you have a beard?
Whether the strive with the spirit or with the man.
Do you have a beard?
Whether the striving, wrestling for the fight or aristoning for the law.
Do you have a beard?
Because of you doing some ministry, you may get some conflict.
Do you have a beard?
You should not worry about it.
Do you have a beard?
You have to say tomorrow I will come first for this ministry. You may say because of the ministry.
Do you know?
What happened, do you know?
Paul hit him and killed him. He went to the river.
One place Paul was beaten because they thought he died, they were dragging him and put him outside the city.
Did he?
They did not carry him.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
They thought he was dead, they were dragging him and took him outside the city and put him.
Do you have a beard?
What did Paul do?
Do you have a beard?
The next day he was standing in the same city and said, this is the living God.
Do you have a beard?
When we get, if we are, when we get a battle, so we have to want to die.
Do you have a beard?
But in another place Paul also did the same.
Do you have a beard?
The next day he made him alive and did that.
Do you have a beard?
Close our eyes.
Do you have a beard?
Because we are having more conflicts.
Do you have a beard?
I have the problem of a depth more, if I goes to fight more means how I can.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
Whatever with the conflict, you say I will stand for the law more than that God will look after everything.
Do you have a beard?
As much as possible you run in this religion, God will also strengthen you and take you.
Do you have a beard?
If you can help, you can run with a chariot, although the spirit of God will take you.
Do you have a beard?
Later than God will look after.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
There is no use of borrowing hundred rupees and giving that.
Do you have a beard?
What was she got, she given it?
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
The simple words are, Lord, mercy on me, the sinners, if you make that prayer, that's enough.
Do you have a beard?
What kind of prayer that man offers?
Do you have a beard?
Did he feel in the spirit and pray?
Do you have a beard?
What kind of prayer he offers?
Do you have a beard?
He did not have the boldness to look and to have it.
Do you have a beard?
He was also towering on his.
Do you have a beard?
He is a Lord, mercy on me, the sinners.
Do you have a beard?
That was his prayer.
Do you have a beard?
Oh, give us a rice, shisman.
Do you have a beard?
Do not bring, do not panic because your conflict is more, God is going to bring to our end for that.
Do you have a beard?
You child of God, you are waiting for action, but there is also a pointed time for your conflict is going to finish.
Do you have a beard?
What the demand of God?
Do you have a beard?
You will stand for the law.
Do you have a beard?
Why shall we stand?
Do you have a beard?
Why shall we stand for the faith?
Do you have a beard?
Why shall we stand in the truth?
Do you have a beard?
Why shall we stand in the fellowship?
How many? How many? Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
Because we are going to prove the cup of God.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
What will I come, I stand for the law?
Do you have a beard?
Whether it is for mine.
Do you have a beard?
Whether it is longer.
Do you have a beard?
Whether it is neck or.
Do you have a beard?
Whether it is barrel.
Do you have a beard?
Whether it is height or depth.
Do you have a beard?
What will I be?
Do you have a beard?
Do you have a shoe, a hat, a cap?
Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Amen. 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 Hoorabala, kashya, baka raba la. Baka ra. Do you have a beard?
Truly?
Do you have a beard?
I have more conflicts.
Do you have a beard? 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 Do you have a beard?
Anybody is here, in my days than the former days, the conflicts is increase going on, increasing in my physical body and in my life, in my business, in my workplace, those are I stand.
Do you have a beard?
I cannot tolerate it, but I expect that today it will over, tomorrow it will over, but I cannot tolerate even that.
Do you have a beard?
I am doing this and that, if I do this and that, it will decrease, but it is not at all decreasing.
Do you have a beard?
God is going to do two things for you.
Do you have a beard?
Again I say.
Do you have a beard?
What is going to do two things for you?
One.
One thing.
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard?
He is going to be in the place where you are and strive for you.
Do you have a beard?
Unless he can.
Hallelujah.
He is standing there, he is going to.
Hallelujah.
Which is going to strive against.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. Rabbaka, rabbaka, thidabakkara, bakkathidabala, kathidakarabala. Sorry, I am asking. Do you have a beard? 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 Hallelujah. Amen. Hoorabala, kathidakarabaka, kathidakarabaka, kathidabala. Oh, thidididikarabaka, kathidabala, kathidakarabaka. No. Do you have a beard? 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 Hoorabala, kathidabaka, kathidabala. Hallelujah. 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 Do you have a beard? 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 Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hoorabala, kathidra. Reemana, baka raba, kathidabala, kathidra. Amen. Kalangidu veno, pagaridu veno. Visavasam irukkayile. Veno, pagaridu veno. Visavasam irukkayile. Asayaya nambe kainandurame. Yesu vilma thirame.
Asayaya nambe kainandurame. Yesu vilma thirame.
Kalangidu veno.
Paguridu veno.
Kattari visavasam irukkayile.
Kalangidu veno, pagaridu veno. Paguril visavasam irukkayile. Asayaya nambe kainandurame. Yesu vilma thirame. Asayaya nambe kainandurame. Yesu vilma thirame. Asayaya nambe kainandurame. Yesu vilma thirame.
Hoorabala, ida mana kashyara. Hoorabala, ida mana kashyara. Do you have a beard? Reddy boy, ah sir, the. Sathr, the. Many. Soul. Satan, the. Oh, you have a beard. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Do you have a beard? 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 Amen. Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard? Amen. Do you have a beard? 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 Job.
Do you have a beard? 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 Do you have a beard?
Do you have a beard? Do you have a beard? Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Hallelujah.